Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Welcome to the October 17th Post Falls City Council meeting. Shannon, please note that all council members are present with the exception of Council President Wilhelm, who is excused tonight. Tonight we have a couple awards. The first up is the Police Star Award presentation to Troy Roeburg.
Well, Mayor and Council, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity and the platform to recognize a few individuals tonight for exemplary work. Assistant Chief Knight and I are really pleased to be here tonight to have the opportunity to recognize these three individuals. We'd like to start by calling up Michelle and Jacob. Are they here somewhere? Because of the sensitivity of this case, I won't get into too many of the details. It involved a juvenile, but we did have a situation where we had a juvenile leave her home voluntarily, ended up over in the Seattle area, and involved in a human trafficking situation. And as the investigator worked on that case, he reached out to the Stewarts, Michelle and her son Jacob, and they did a wonderful job of helping us get the information that we need and bring this case to a quick resolution. And we really feel, I was just talking with the detective supervisor this afternoon about this case, and we really feel if it wasn't for their willingness to assist us and willingness to give us the information, that this young lady may have had something very tragic happen to her. So, the awards committee met, and I just want to read a letter that they wrote. They gave each one of you a letter, and we'll present you with an award here, but I just want to read a portion of this letter because I think it really says a lot about what you did. It says, "Miss Stewart, the Post Falls Police Department was working on a missing person case and solicited your assistance to gather more information due to your son's connection with the missing person. You willfully assisted and provided information in a timely manner that tremendously helped the case, ultimately leading to the location of the missing person, potentially saving her life and bringing down an even larger crime ring. You have displayed an exemplary concern for the well-being of another person and also saved a countless number of other victims affected by the crime ring that was brought down at the close of this case. That act is what qualifies you for this award. I am pleased to present this award, the Post Falls Police Department Humanitarian Award, to you and your son." And I just want to say in closing, thank you again. We were able to, working with the FBI over in the Seattle area, take several people into custody. We had quite a sex trafficking ring going on over there, and you changed people's lives because of what you did. So, on behalf of the Post Falls Police Department, we present these two awards to you.[233.62][233.62](applause)
Thank you so much for your help. Thank you.
Want to hand this to Michelle?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michelle and Jacob, thank you so much.
We have excellent law enforcement agencies, and they work collaboratively with each other, but it's citizens like you that assist them, so we can't thank you enough for the work you did. Thank you again.
Got a couple certificates here for you, too. And last, but certainly not least, if I could have Officer Roeburg, Detective Roeburg, come up. Unfortunately, Troy has recently left the Post Falls Police Department to pursue his education, but I can't doggone him too hard because I'm not too far behind him, so.[312.12][312.12](laughter) But Troy was a great loss to the Post Falls Police Department and is working towards a degree in the medical field, and we certainly support that. But I just wanted to take a minute and also thank Troy for his work. Troy was the detective that worked on this case and did just an outstanding job. If I could go into all the details, you'd just be amazed at all of the work, the different search warrants that he had to get, tracking down IP addresses, and just relentless in your pursuit of this young lady, and I really appreciate that. But I just want to read what the awards committee wrote about for you as well. It says, "On June 16th, the Post Falls Police Department received a report of a runaway juvenile. You were the detective assigned to the case and provided the follow-up investigation. During the course of the investigation, you worked the case relentlessly using multiple resources to include friends, parents, Facebook, and other police agencies, including the FBI. Ultimately, you found this to be a case of human trafficking. You coordinated multi-agency efforts across the state lines to locate this child and were ultimately able to find her and bring her back to safety. Detective Roeburg, your persistence and quick action are undoubtedly what led to the close of this case and a young girl from being further victimized by a human trafficking ring. This shows a sincere dedication to public service and is a fine example of the extraordinary police work that you do." Thank you so much, we appreciate it. And on behalf of the Post Falls Police Department Awards Committee, we want to present you
Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you so much.
With that, again, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for allowing us to join you in the presentation and thanking these folks for what they've done. Troy, thanks for what you've given to the city, and best of luck to you in the future as you pursue your new career. Next item up, Council, as you know, we have a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and zoning Chairman Davis and I met with Sam Bishop, a local gentleman who's been in the city for, I believe, nine years, desired to get involved and help the city out. I asked Ryan if he was comfortable with Sam. We both interviewed him, and he seems to be a good fit, and I would like to bring his name forward for confirmation to appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Just so you know, he's filling the position of Dare Wilder, whose work took him out of town, so that's where the vacancy came from. We do have a proclamation that's quite lengthy. World Polio Day. Whereas Rotary International, founded on February 23rd, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organization, and whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary Club members comprised of professionals and business leaders in over 35,000 clubs in 200 countries and geographic areas. And whereas Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the global polio eradication initiative, which today includes World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date, Rotary has contributed more than 1.7 billion, with a B, dollars in countless volunteer hours to the protection of more than 2 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is currently working to raise an additional $150 million, which, if realized, will be tripled by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation for a total of up to $450 million over the next three years. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas, in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $8 billion to the effort. And whereas thousands of Rotary Club members throughout Idaho sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, health, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities and abroad. Now, therefore, I, Ronald Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, do hereby proclaim October 24th as World Polio Day in Post Falls and encourage all citizens to join myself and Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world, dated the 17th day of October 2017. If I'm not mistaken, I think there are three countries in the world in which polio still exists, and I can't remember what the number was, but I think the number of new cases was maybe less than 10 last year, so we're close. And we talked about the money Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation has given, that's only a fraction of what they've given. They've given, I would guess, probably 300 to 400 million already for this, so anyway, it's a very good cause. Polio's a terrible disease, and it's almost gone, so hopefully we'll get it eradicated. We do have an amendment to the agenda?
Yes, we do. We need to remove Item E off the consent calendar, and that item is the Greens Ferry Grove First Edition Subdivision Construction Improvement Agreement.
Entertain a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Henderson.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, we do have a couple items of new business, and the first is, we've talked about this previously, but I believe it's a different request, so Susan Jaclyn has asked if she could come forward and speak to the council on the request to add the city as a beneficiary of the Jack facility in incorporation documents. So, we told Susan, "Come in, we'll give you 10 minutes and let you present." So, Susan, the stage is yours.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here, Mayor Jacobson and City Council members. My name is Susan Jaclyn, and I represent, first, my family; second, as interim director of the Jaclyn Arts and Culture Center, I'm representing the board. Our original, or incorporated name is Community Building Partners, as well as historical society members and members of the community of Post Falls and surrounding communities. I would ask that, in your packet, you will realize that what I'm presenting today has representation from Riverbend Commerce Park, from Jim Hammond, City Administrator of Coeur d'Alene, Kim Brown, a member of the Historical Society. Our reason for being here this evening is to set in motion a gift, the Old Church. We know its rightful place is in the heart of our city center, creating for Post Falls a sense of dignity by honoring our past. We would like to gift this building and property to the City of Post Falls, keeping its historically accurate exterior for future generations to admire and appreciate. Having read the comprehensive plan for our city, I know that you are taking historical structures seriously and have made plans for preservation. With the love of our past and honoring our city founders, those that have made Post Falls an important part of Idaho's history, we want to keep that sense of place. We have very few remaining reminders of our past and the importance that they play in molding the character of our city and state. Our community's legacy is the Old Church. It is a statement, it is the crowning jewel. As we review, as we view our city center as it is today, we find a beautiful city hall. Next door on our campus, we have the newly-built Chamber of Commerce. And not to be outshadowed, we have the magnificent Old Church, honored by being on the National Register of Historical Places, perfectly restored to the grandeur of an era gone by, yet there for the future of our children to understand and take pride in the history of Post Falls. As our neighborhood matures and grows, with restaurants, parks, and new businesses, we have created a fantastic focal point from which Commerce will grow. Economic development is making our city vibrant. Many visitors ask, "What can we do in Post Falls?" Well, we have the natural beauty, we have parks, we have great dining, and we have a great art center. But most of all, we have the ties to our past, moving to the future with the Old Church. Now, I'd like to take a few minutes and show you some pictures of this important structure. Okay, if I can, yeah. Okay. Many of you will remember the building as it looks in this photograph. The old porch was converted into a office for the minister, and it was worshipped as a church from 1920 until the 1980s. At that time, the members of the church felt that the building was not able to be used. They thought that things were deteriorated past the point of being renovated. So, just for your own historic, you know, so I can share a little bit, the right-hand building part of the church where the porch used to be, that is the Presbyterian Church, and the left-hand side is the Methodist Episcopal Church. And these two churches were brought together, we're not quite sure, we think by rolling the buildings on logs, but from two separate parts of our Post Falls area. So, this looks good. It got worse. I mean, the windows were torn out, or rocks were thrown through the windows, the paint was in terrible shape. So, this gentleman right here, Mr. John Rodkey, who was a member of the Presbyterian Church, and this picture was taken on his 90th birthday, he has a big story to tell about this building. John was in the process of tearing the church apart, and he started from the inside, and what he did is he took a, he created a big hole in the middle of the sanctuary, and he took all the plaster, which had horsehair in it, wainscoting, everything, and threw it into this hole into the basement because they were going to make it into a parking lot. Thank goodness he started from the inside because, well, actually, he wanted the wood for a church and lapway. But the reason it's so important is when he started to take away the plaster, he said, "Wait a minute, this looks in too good a shape." So, he took a plumb line and really realized that the structure was perfectly straight. So, let me show you what's happened then. If I can, well, I'm kind of getting ahead of my story, but what I'd like to share with you is Community Building Partners was formed as a committee after John Rodkey realized that the building was too beautiful to dismantle. And as a member of the church, he actually said, "Hey, I've stopped the demolition, I want to find out if there's some way we can use this building." Well, I happened to be there that day, and I happened to raise my hand. And, long story short, we formed Community Building Partners, a nonprofit organization. After many city hall meetings, planning, seeing what could be done with the building, we finally decided, yes, it could be an art building, but we made sure that the space was flexible so it could be used for many other things. So, this, what we did is we hired a very good designer for the building, and then we had an architectural firm come in, and that was Walker Construction. And Walker Construction is well-known in Spokane, and through the designing of the interior of the building, they completely renovated it from the bottom up. We had new pipes, new electricity, new heating, new roof. So, I just wanted to show you how they transformed this building. So, this is what we call the fireside room, and you can see it's clean as a whistle with the exception of the exterior walls. Another view of the same room. I love this picture because the roughed-hewn timber is what you're seeing on the ceiling, and there is no damage to it, it's in perfect shape. This is a very young Tom Walker because we opened our building in 2005, and Tom is now CEO of Walker Construction, but he's very young in that picture. And this is a great last picture of the renovation being started because we took the choir, the alcove was elevated for the choir, and we lowered it so that it could be more useful for many other, for many uses. This is after we had completely researched the color, the original color of the church. The porch was restored to its original grandeur, and this is showing before we had any of the landscape done. Now, that you've seen the pictures, I want to discuss, well, we can, let me show you it finished, and then I'll show you, I'll speak to you again. But now that you've seen it in various stages, Walker Construction actually has this on their website. They're so proud of their renovation of our building. New roof, restored porch to its grandeur of old, our steeple. Yeah, we can, just the Gothic, it's called a Prairie Gothic structure, that's the building, including the bell inside. Yeah, so I think that's about all of the pictures. My question to you is, when we incorporated, and I can refer to the article, and it's in your package, Article 5 under the incorporation. And back when we incorporated, which was in 1998, we said, under Article 5, kind of towards the bottom, it says, "In the event that the corporation is dissolved, the remaining assets of the corporation shall become vested in the Post Falls School District for use for the, by the district as deemed appropriate by the Board of Trustees of the district." Well, that was back in 1998, and that isn't the place for this building. We all know that that place for the building is in Post Falls City, owned by the city. So, our proposition, the board could have changed the articles, voted on it, and put the city in instead of the school district. They did not want that. They want permission from the city to have the City of Post Falls be the recipient if the Community Building Partners dissolves. And that is our question of the day, and I have, you may have questions, but I hope I've shown the significance of the building to all of you, and I have, representing us as well is Art McCumber, and he's here to answer any questions if you have legal questions. But we're asking permission to put your name in our incorporation.
One of the things I would suggest we do, we can have discussion, but our council is not at the meeting tonight, so what I would like to do is, if council has comments, wants to share thoughts, et cetera, that's fine, but anything that we would need our city attorney for, we can defer until the next meeting when he's back, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Because Mr. McCumber could actually answer the questions from the legal standpoint, from the foundation, from the charitable organization, but we're still going to need our city's attorney, so just so you know. So, the question before us, we, you know, had talked about whether or not would the city be interested in running the Jack? And I think the decision was, I don't think, the decision was no. So, the question then is, if in fact, Northwest Partners, is that the correct name?
Community.
Community Building Partners.
Community Building Partners dissolves, would the city be willing to accept this or at least have first right of refusal on this building? So, I believe that's a question before.
And the land as well. I mean, it's a whole package.
Right, right.
Right.
So, anyway, I just want to throw that out, and we'll listen to discussion. Carrie?
Well, I think that makes perfectly good sense to exchange our name for the City of Post Falls for the school district. It is a beautiful building, it has a good heart, you know, good things have happened there. I do think we need further discussion on whether the city were to take it sooner rather than later, but that, I don't think there's, yeah, it's a tough one for me because I love that building.
Well, it comes down, if we take it, what ramifications, what can we do?
Yeah, so we just need more.
We need legal advice for that.
More information to make that kind of a decision.
Al?
I guess my questions are about, when you first started to speak, you said you wanted to give us the building.
Right.
But you're not really giving us the building now. You're saying that only when the partnership or the corporation dissolves, then the city would take ownership of the building.
I'm really glad you brought that up, Art, because I think that could be a discussion that we might have with your legal counsel and ours. Not that we're opposed to even, that thought has just come into play in that we might be able to rent from the city if we want to keep the arts alive in that building, but also you may want to consider just taking the building, and we pray that you'll keep the exterior to its historical significant exterior, but the interior certainly could be whatever the city desires.
So, I guess I'm still confused.
Okay.
Are we just talking about substituting our name for the city right now?
That's number one.
That's the, I'm going to interrupt, I'm going to play the attorney, so on tonight's agenda, that is what we have listed for a discussion item.
Sure.
We could come back with the other discussion item if you wanted to hear that, but you couldn't consider that here tonight.
Okay. Did I ask you, Al?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, just briefly, my name's Art McCumber, I represent Community Building Partners, and I was asked by Freeman Duncan to assist because of his retirement and leaving the area of law. I've been a property lawyer for over 10 years, as many of you know, and also have the distinct pleasure of being the ex-attorney for the cities of Hutter and Hauser, so I know somewhat about your municipal process. And what the Community Building Partners tonight would like to request is that the city approve and intent to move forward with discussing a transition of this gift. This is a significant gift, not only in terms of monetary value of the dirt in the building together, but there is a significant potential contribution to the City of Post Falls as an attractant for businesses that move here, and also for the existing community to use the building in various ways. Obviously, the gift would need to include some measure of a transition between its current use, where there is an existing calendar of events. current use where there is an existing calendar of events as an arts center, and there are other events that, that help maintain the financial viability of the Jack as it is today. And so, I think what we'd like to do is get the city's approval of an intention to move forward with the gift pending the details, more or less. Now, today I pulled a property report to see what all the documents were in the public record regarding this parcel. I have not analyzed them yet, but I will be advising my client on what I find, and then I think some of those things may need to be accounted for when the city considers finalizing the gift. And so, if, if that is helpful, I think perhaps, I don't know, Mayor, if you would like to see a timeframe for consideration of the gift, maybe six months, nine months, twelve months, I don't know if the city administrator has an idea in terms of a timeframe, but I, from a municipal standpoint, and I believe from the Jack standpoint also, it would be proper to consider a timeframe for finalization of the gift if it is in fact to occur.
My thought is, if council opts to move forward or authorize the moving forward of this, in whatever form it may be, we could then come back, meet with council, and come up with a timeframe at that point. I don't know if that's something we have to do tonight, but my main concern tonight is what council's take is and what your wishes would be as far as the substitution to replace the school district and for future consideration of receiving this as a gift to the city.
I would say replacing the school district in Article Five, I would definitely approve that, that, I would agree to that, but we need more information, legal counsel for the other. Can I just say, Susan?
Yes.
Thank you. To you and Dwayne, I, I've spent much time in that beautiful building and it is a gift that is so beyond whatever the monetary value is, and I just want you to know that, that is appreciated greatly.
Joe?
Question, I kind of get the impression that there may be plans, either official or unofficial, to dissolve the Community Building Partners group soon, anyway, is that true or no?
We do not have plans at this time.
So is there a particular reason for the, for, the, what's the word I'm looking for?
Substitution?
For, for the rush to, to transfer their ownership?
Yeah, Joe, one thing you'll find about most of my clients is that they're all long-term planners, for various reasons. The Community Building Partners has said, "We need a long-term plan for disposition of this asset." In fact, the people that worked on it and the people that are working on it now, including myself, nobody's getting any younger. So, to have a plan for something as vibrant as this community center should be, should be undertaken.
If the, and stop me if, if this goes beyond the scope of what we can talk about tonight, but if the long-term, if it's a long-term plan, then it seems like just swapping out the school district for the city, if there's no intent to dissolve the nonprofit, that would be a long-term plan. It sounds like the interest is in a more short-term plan, as you mentioned, six months, a year. So I guess I'm, well, it's a tremendous gift, but the concern I have is also maybe a tremendous liability financially. So is, is that the, is that the reason for the urgency or is it something else?
Well, I, I don't say there's necessarily urgency, I would say that whenever you have a gift of this size with an ongoing operation to it, then there needs to be a transition. If the transition is triggered two years from now, or one month from now, or five years from now, is pretty irrelevant. That timeframe has to be built. And so, entering into discussions with the city, if the city intends to make that substitution, then Community Building Partners could go ahead and then work to, you know, make those plans happen. What we do know is, the Post Falls School District would like to be substituted out.
I'm good. Okay, is that our turn?
Yep.
Betty?
So the Post Falls School District really doesn't want to have anything to do with this as of right now?
It's the wrong place.
It's the wrong place.
Betty, yeah, it belongs to the city, it belongs to us as a community, not the school district. This is in the heart of the city campus, we're, we're building around us, the economic development. This is so important for all of us, not just the school district. The school district can use it, of course, but it's bigger than that.
So if, and if and when this is turned over to the city?
Right.
Would the city have complete control over, complete control over making all of the decisions for it or would?
Yes, you would have, am I stepping out of turn or?
No, 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 I, I think that what the presentation showed and what Ms. Jaclyn is trying to say is that the exterior of the building should be preserved.
Right.
And so if the city says, "We would like to use it for this purpose as opposed to that purpose,"
Right.
Then again, that would trigger those transitions.
Okay, yep.
Yeah. George, answer yes.
Okay, answer yes.
Lynn?
I would support the change of Article Five to the city, but I think any further discussion needs to take place with the council and, and the Jaclyn Board.
And counsel, legal counsel.
And council, and we need to spend some time discussing all the other issues that presents.
Well, I think, you know, I'll weigh in, I agree with what's been said, it's a beautiful facility, the contribution the Jaclyn family has made to that is tremendous. The work you've done to get it to where it is is, you know, a huge achievement, we appreciate it. And I would agree, I think tonight, what we can look to do is substitutions, substituting the city in that Article Five. Further discussion can take place. Art, with you and, and Warren, you know, and perhaps with both of you present, so we can see what we can, what we can't do legally, so whatever we do as a council, we make sure our legal counsel buys off on.
Sure.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to that effect, if that's what you would like to do.
I would make a motion to request that the city is added as a beneficiary to the Jack facility in the incorporation documents.
Article Five?
Article Five.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
My only concern is, that's obligating us to something we haven't had a chance to talk to Warren about just exactly what we're being obligated to.
Don't have to take it.
Right, the agreement will come back, and so, when they bring back the agreement, this is just authorizing us to move forward.
Yeah, okay.
So you will get the agreement back here.
Okay, okay. Please take the roll.
Henderson.
Excuse me, do we have a second? We did, did we?
Yes. Henderson.
Hi.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Art, Susan, thank you very much, and I'm sure we'll have further discussion as we move forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda under new business is the Point Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Mr. Manley?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we take just a short break for the?
Oh, sure.
Folks to make their way out?
Take your few-minute break here.
here at the city Post Falls, introducing the Point Comp Plan Amendment, CPA-17-01. Location of this proposed amendment is as you see here in the, the red hashed area, which is north of I-90, west of Baway, south of Seltice, and east of State Line. The reason for this request from city staff is, it's kind of twofold, one, to make it consistent with the underlying site plan, and also per the request of the surrounding property and property owners within this area. So currently what you see here is, now it's hashed black, is to the south is already zoned or designated as commercial within the future land use map. So the proposal would be to go from this grayish, purplish color to a red, making this area here suitable for commercial development. The back road interchange in the area is compatible and, and to support commercial development. We have a commercial site plan that's been approved for that area, that's how Walmart is out there, and Cabela's is out there. Plus with, by making it commercial, it'll make the area more consistent with how it's being marketed or intended to be developed for commercial development. Now what I have here, this is an example of the commercial site plan that was approved, where you see these anchor tenants planned, you have some pads planned out here for development. And so, really it's just to kind of make kind of everything consistent, you have all commercial, it's designated commercial, it'll also help site selector sites, look for it, it'll pop up as a commercial site for development. Industrial development, a lot of times, next to commercial could seem risky, there's uses that are permitted in the industrial land use table that could potentially undermine commercial investments. So, that pretty much summarizes the request for the, the amendment.
John, to your knowledge, is the intent to develop it commercially?
The intent is to develop it commercially, so what, from what I hear.
Next question I would have, and I don't mean to get ahead of myself, but can multifamily go in commercial development?
Multifamily is considered a form of commercial development, but as our.
That would have to come back.
But it's currently, as our code is stated, that it can only come, be approved through a special use permit.
Okay. Any questions, John?
I have several.
Go ahead.
Kind of along that same line, John, I don't, I pulled out my old planning and zoning stuff, zoning classifications, I don't know how current it is or anything, I don't think too much has changed, but the way I look at this, everything that you're talking about, all that commercial development can take place under this zone as it exists today.
Yes, it could, a lot of commercial development can be permitted through a industrial zoning designation, but, the same token, there's uses that you wouldn't want developed as industrial, potentially in this location.
Well, the way I looked at it, really what we're doing is we're trading out the opportunities to develop any kind of manufacturing in that area for the opportunity, as the mayor brought up, residential use. So we're basically saying we're going to take this land that's been set aside for a variety of different things, including commercial and also including manufacturing, and we're saying, okay, we're going to, we're going to change it in such a way that now we can't put manufacturing there, but we can put housing.
Well, there is some manufacturing that could be permitted through a special use permit. I mean, I could get the, the, I could get that on the overhead and we can look at some of those special use permits and what could be permitted from an industrial standpoint in commercial.
I guess I'm, I'm back to my original question, is that why do we need to change anything? If it's really, truly, if that, if that's what somebody wants to do with the property, they can do that as the property is zoned right now. But what it, but what I'm concerned about is if we change it to CCS, then we're going to be facing the same dilemma that we did when the Watson Group came in and said, "You know what, that, we like that idea, but we're going to scrap that and now we want to put rooftops in there." And I just firmly believe that rooftops is the wrong thing to continue to put on that piece of property. Am I totally off-base?
I'm not going to disagree with you on that, but we do have a special use permit process that you present the case, and I would say, from my stance, if I was presenting before P&amp;Z, I probably would state it in a fashion that this has historically been viewed as a, a commercial shopping destination, it's been designated that for about over a decade, and so, thinking about sticking multifamily out there should be weighed carefully over how this has actually been intended to be developed. I mean, we have a site plan right here that doesn't show any multifamily on it.
Well, I know, but you and I both know that that is not etched in stone in any way, shape, or form. That could be tossed out the window tomorrow, correct?
Through a public process.
Property that was out there that we had recently with Watson was also historically, and when we first plotted that whole area, it was all supposed to be industrial slash commercial. First step, they came back and said, "We need rooftops, we build woodbridge." Did not, did not increase the ability to put commercial or industrial on that piece of property. I believe that was mistake number one. Second, they come back again, they say, "No, we need more rooftops." And, again, I think that, I believe that that was mistake number two, when we approved the option for them to come in and put more rooftops. I just firmly believe that by changing this, we're just setting ourselves up for that opportunity for somebody to come back in the future and say, "You know what, we really wanted to do that, but we just couldn't find any anchors for that, so now we want to put in multifamily, more rooftops in an area that has historically, by your own proclamation, been set aside for industrial and commercial use."
Well, looking at the site plan, commercial, it may have been zoned industrial, but the site plan was communicating commercial, but I would like to add that we had an individual that came in yesterday and there was a business that was in Seattle, and they're thinking about selling their land, they get, and they're trying to get out of the Seattle market, and they were asking about this comp plan amendment, and they're watching it because they're trying to reduce their risks. The industrial designation is a risk for commercial investments. So they're interested to see if, how this goes, so it's worth, is it worth their investor outside the area to invest in this property? For me, like, I don't know whether or not, whether it gets approved or not, whether they would come forward and invest in it, but those are the kind of conversations I have at the counter, of people interested in kind of weighing their options. So, I mean, this is why you guys, and it's before you, if you guys decide like, you know, we like it industrial, it's the way it's been, we want to move forward, so be it. If you guys want, you guys see it that commercials is going to work and you guys think that would reduce the risk, then I can support that too.
If I can follow up on Al's comment, I agree with what you said, Al. Do you feel, John, from the conversations you've had, that the fact that it is zoned industrial currently is a detriment to the marketability of the project and that if it were zoned commercial, it would improve the marketability? Is that your feeling?
That's, that's my feeling.
And that's what we've been told by Wadsworth and his representatives. They do have letters of intent on the property out there and it's all commercial, none of it's multifamily at this time, it's all commercial. The letters of intent, I think they've signed two small commercial entities off those letters of intent, and then the additional, there's a couple big box, some, I think you said, some like clothing retail that are looking, and they have letters of intent with them right at this time.
And they can be there under the current zoning, correct? Zoning doesn't have to change.
I can't speak to that, John would have to speak to that.
Well, I don't know exactly what these letter of intent is for their uses, but assuming that they're commercial, there's a high probability that they would be permitted.
Looking at my chart, it says it's permitted. I mean, unless it's something that's not listed on here. Again, when I look at this, the only thing that we swap out is the, the availability for someone to put manufacturing there and opening up the opportunity for somebody to put residential there.
And what we hear from the Wadsworth Group is, there is some reluctance for the commercial to want to locate where they think manufacturing might locate right next to them, and that's, that's what we're hearing from them, so they would like to have this designated specifically commercial, and then there is some industrial that's located off, which I understand they're negotiating with an industrial buyer right now on that, on that section that they're leaving industrial.
Well, and I'll go back to my arguments prior, and that is, if we continuously change or take away the land. or take away the land that's designated in Post Falls for industrial, we're taking away that opportunity to attract those manufacturing jobs with, you know, everything I read is, we want manufacturing jobs. Nowadays, we're not talking about putting a steel mill out there, we're talking about clean manufacturing, like tetter or buck knives or something like that. You know, that's not going, I can't see where having a tetter or a buck knives next to whatever is, is really a detriment. But I can really see that we will open the door to the opportunity for someone to come in the future and push for multifamily in that area. Just, and I hate the fact that we've set this property aside for commercial slash industrial manufacturing, and now we're essentially saying, no, we don't want that anymore. Because then my question comes, so if somebody wants to come here and build a new manufacturing facility, where, where can they go?
How many acres do we have?
Aren't we limiting?
Off the cuff, I don't have that, that acreage. I do know that as part of the comprehensive plan process, we do intend to designate a very large percentage of, north of the rail line for this area up to 53, to east of Pleasant View as being industrial, as well as in the paper recently, you've seen of Tech Park potentially proposed at Highway 41 in Prairie. So, city staff and a consultant are looking at areas that are potentially more appropriate for industrial uses.
And John, in the comprehensive plan amendment, this is planned to be designated as commercial, is that correct?
Yes, but I've talked with the consultant, if it goes commercial, we weren't going to, the intent for this particular area isn't to allow for multifamily. So, that's a follow-up question, would, could council potentially be more comfortable with a zone change if it wasn't allowed for any sort of multifamily on this? So, commercial, but prohibiting multifamily?
I would be, most definitely. I think there's just other places within our, our community where housing fits better. And I don't, I don't want to be here, and I don't want to be sitting at home 10 years from now, no longer on the council, and see somebody coming forward and saying, I want to put multifamily out there.
Joe, you had a comment?
Well, I'm trying to remember what the heck it was, but I think Shelley answered, no, you were doing well. I think Shelley answered my question. I was wondering what the, when you said that there, people that were interested in it, but it was too much of a risk if it was zoned industrial, why that would be considered a gamble for them to use, to want to, commercial use?
Because some of the, I mean, the chances are slim, because you're low-tech manufacturing, they're not going to pay the price per square foot to be located on the site, they're just not going to locate there. So, you're going to get your higher price per square foot manufacturing that compenses for the products that they deliver.
If it is, if it is zoned industrial?
If it's zoned industrial. I mean, because the market kind of resolves itself. I mean, you're next to an interstate, you have good access, the value of land's expensive, so you're going to get either some commercial that can price that out and/or industrial that can absorb that cost. So, chances of industrial is pretty slim, but you could potentially get a higher utilizer, higher use type industrial facility out there. It just, they more likely would rather go to the north a bit, where they could get a lesser price per square foot, get in at a lesser cost, and, but.
But you are saying that we can change it to CCS and?
Not currently. Well, basically, if you guys are apprehensive, and this has all been a great discussion, because it also helps with the comp plan and zoning ordinance update that we're doing. If you guys weren't comfortable, we could, this adds, when we tailor that commercial zoning for this area, just not allow multifamily. So, by springtime to summer, in that range, we get our zoning ordinance, potentially we could designate this as commercial, eliminating the potential for multifamily.
Multifamily and single family?
Single family does.
Yeah, it'd be all residential.
Okay.
You wouldn't want to have, to the way I see this, you wouldn't want to have multifamily anywhere between Bowway and Cabela's.
And residential can't go into commercial, right?
Right.
It's multifamily.
Right.
But the question I have is, if we approve it tonight, and you're updating the plan and that zoning, or that zoning classification where we could prohibit and/or limit, is not available to us tonight?
No, it's not. So, you'd have that window between tonight and springtime, where someone could put together a special use permit package, present it before the Planning and Zoning Commission, because that's where that goes, and they could potentially approve the multifamily project.
A bit of a risk, a few months.
And that would never come before us?
No, the special use permits, they, they go to the P&amp;Z.
Same time, we could just not do anything tonight and wait until the comprehensive plan is updated in the spring and make the change at that time.
If that's the direction that the council would like to go down, then that's what we would do.
I'd like to know if that, I'm not opposed to that, but I'd like to know from the folks that have signed the letter of intent, if they're serious, if that would be a detriment to them.
I guess the key word there is intent.
Well, you can interpret that any way we want.
I agree, I agree.
Joe, any comments?
Not really anything that we knew, so.
No, because if we do nothing, they could still do multifamily there if planning and zoning approved it.
I'm not going to do nothing.
Not in a, not as it's zoned right now.
Industrial, correct?
Yeah, I'll go show these.
Special use permit?
No. So, the question is, with the special use permit, could they put multifamily in industrial zone?
Um, no. No.
Okay.
So, what you see here is the current zoning, where you see the red, those areas are eligible for a special use permit request. Where you see the gray, it's not eligible.
I would move that we deny the request.
I would second that.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson? Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Could I ask a question? If, if you see that this is, we don't want to circumvent, because I understand where Mr. Wolf has come with this, but if we hear that there are potential users out there, but this is causing them concern, and if that intent is more serious than just an intent, because they could do it, right? I mean, they could go in with a business right now, a commercial business in that zoning, but keep us posted if, if we need to reevaluate this as we get closer to that timeframe, when we can then restrict it with a zoning classification.
Yeah, and I agree with that entirely. I guess if I'm a potential letter of intent, I would look at this meeting and say, well, from what I heard at this meeting, the only thing they don't want there is multifamily. And once the, you know, it's, steps are in place. So, I would, if I was that guy on Seattle or wherever with this letter of intent, I'd probably walk away going, you know what, I'm okay, I can still do my project, because this council has said, we just don't want multifamily there.
So, I agree with what you said, Mr. Wolf.
Just keep us posted, yeah.
And I would say, letters of intent are very serious, just, I mean, I heard that question. Facilities such as Home Depot and Lowe's and the various big boxes don't sign a letter of intent easily. So, when they, when they have a letter of intent with someone, it is a very serious, and they're in a due diligence process of looking at whether or not to locate that facility there. And so, just so you know, letters of intent are, it's a very serious commitment to the developer, and they don't sign them lightly.
Well, again, please keep us posted if, if you see it's detrimental or causing us from having some businesses locate here.
And so, with the denial of that, that also the resolution for this would probably occur, nor the, the zone, the proposed zone change in the public hearings?
So, neither of the, so it'd be, the first resolution, correct?
Correct, so Resolution A will?
Okay. Okay, thanks, Sean.
All right, thank you.
Next item up is memorandum of understanding with Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency for 310 North Spokane Street.
So, the city had approached the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency to have them market the property, what's now being called 310 North Railroad Avenue. I mean, sorry, I keep wanting to call it Railroad Avenue, because that's the original address of the property, Spokane Street. And it is the corner lot, it's .6 acres. The Post Falls Urban Renewal would put together an RFP committee that consists of two staff members from the city, and two council, or commission members from the commission, and two business people from the community in this area, and go forward with putting together an RFP. And that RFP would be sent out to the community, and those evaluation, or those RFP responses would be evaluated by the committee, and they would recommend to the agency and the city a successful candidate for purchase of that property.
Shelley, would you address the reason, the benefits of going through urban renewal as opposed to having the city going out for bid?
The city can only auction it, we can't put any kind of restrictions on that property if we were to sell it, so we would just do a sideline auction, basically. And Shannon would handle that process, and it would go to the highest bidder. With the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency taking the helm, they can actually put some restrictions on that property, and when you, I can't remember if I sent you guys the RFP, the draft RFP with this, I think I did.
Yes.
Didn't I, yes? So, it outlines some of those things that we can do, so we can make sure that the developer has the money to actually develop the property, so you don't end up with a corner lot that sits vacant, or a half-built building on that lot, unfinished building, things like that, that could potentially happen. We could also restrict, such as no drive-through, or if you wanted to see particular businesses locate there, you could specify to those type of facilities. When we were talking with the commission, they were saying, you know, you could, you could actually, if, when you look at the proposals, you had somebody who had a better proposal, and the RFP's committee's opinion for this area that would provide better benefit, you can select that particular proposal over another one. And so, I know, like Jerry Bolts, like the thought of maybe something that had an underground parking with it, because the lot is pretty small. Also, we discussed having an agreement with Cootney County for parking after hours, and I know they've been open to that concept in the past.
I understand that we can't put restrictions on there as the city?
Correct.
On a, you know, what we could sell it for, but can we put restrictions on the Urban Renewal Agency, on what they can do with the property? Or are they going to have free rein and?
No, I mean, the, the actual RFP will be approved by both the city and the agency, so any of those requirements that we want to see in there, we can have included.
Okay, perfect. Just more control.
Right. They'll just kind of, they'll be at the helm of the process.
Any other questions on that? Need a motion on that, I would assume?
Well, I would move to draft, agree to a memorandum of understanding with the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency for 310 North Spokane Street property.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up is ordinances and resolution, and item A is off the table at this point. Resolution B, Seltice wave mitigation. Someone want to make the motion?
Move to place the ordinance of?
Another resolution.
Huh?
It's a resolution.
Oh, sorry.
Just move to place, approve the resolution.
Let's move to approve the resolution, Seltice wave congestion mitigation, state and local agreement update.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item up is the ordinance, Riverview addition zone change.
I think I can do this one.
Are we still doing that one or?
Yep, the ordinance, we are. Riverview addition, isn't that the one? Was that the one that?
This is totally different.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a different one.
Gotcha.
Joe's going to take it.
Unless you want to. Move to place the ordinance, Riverview addition zone change, file number ZC-17-03, on its first and only reading by title only, while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Shannon, please.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for change in zoning classifications for the land described in Section 1 of this ordinance, from industrial to high-density multifamily residential R3, providing for amendment of that, of the official zoning map to reflect this change, providing that all prior zones applicable to lands described in Section 1 are hereby superseded and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance, Riverview addition zone change, file number ZC-17-03, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up is the Guy Road Vacation Ordinance.
Move to place the ordinance, Guy Road Vacation, file number VAC-17-02, on its first and only reading by title only, while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thank you, Joe, for filling in on that. Now, we do not need the public hearing, is that correct?
We do not.
So, it's on.
We do not.
So, next item up is unfinished business, and tonight we have none. Next item is citizens' issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address a council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. Anyone cares to speak, come forward, give your name for the record, and we'll give you five minutes.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Wolf for everything he said, because that's basically what I was going to say during this public hearing, or the public hearing that got, just got canceled. I attended a meeting approximately a week ago, there's a speaker there by the, that you all know, by the name of Jim Hammond, and he basically stated that, right now, Coeur d'Alene is in terrible problems. They cannot attract any manufacturing, because they have no land left. He said he wished they'd thought about it ahead of time, but they didn't, and now they're basically landlocked. Thank you, folks, for thinking ahead.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Chief, did you have something?
Evening, Mayor and Council, Warren Mayor for the record. I just want to take a couple of minutes, because the next meeting of the city council is after the daylight saving time. It's that time of year when we ask people to remember to change your clock and change your battery, so it's important. Smoke detectors do, do save lives. Also, it's that time of year when we ask people to think about maintaining their chimneys, getting them serviced, make sure that you dispose of ashes properly. You know, to lose a home is a very unfortunate circumstance for anybody that's involved, and it's certainly for, for the personnel that respond there. So, again, it's, it's winter time, we continue to get busier and busier. And I do want to report just a little bit on Station 2, it's already made a difference. As you know, we opened up a new fire station on July, on July 1 of this last year, and they've already been in on, on many types of critical emergency calls, including cardiac arrests. So, we've seen a, a major improvement in service on the west side of the city, and with everything that's coming, it's none too soon. So, again, just a chance to report on that and ask people to get ready for the winter season that's coming. Thanks very much.
Chief, I didn't just replace batteries, I replaced all the smoke detectors.
I need six in my house that, that are.
Lock them over. Anyone else?
Can I have that?
Sure.
And to that, if, you know, we have a service at Cootney Fire for those people that, that need it, too. On occasion, we can come out and replace a smoke detector.
How you tell me?
Yeah, now I tell you. But we have a, a height restriction, because we don't want to accept the responsibility, because there are some big ceilings in this town. And then, and then, too, when we're there on. they've already been in on many types of critical emergency calls, including cardiac arrests. So, we've seen a major improvement in service on the west side of the city, and with everything that's coming, it's none too soon. So, again, just a chance to report on that and ask people to get ready for the winter season that's coming. Thanks very much.
Chief, you'd be proud, I didn't just replace batteries, I replaced all the smoke detectors.
I need six in my house that are going to go over.
I'll come over. Anyone else?
Can I have that?
Sure.
And two, that, you know, we have a service at Cootney Fire for those people that need it, too. On occasion, we can come out and replace a smoke detector.
Now you tell me.
Yeah, now I tell you. But we have a height restriction, because we don't want to accept the responsibility, because there are some big ceilings in this town. And then, and then two, when we're there on EMS runs or fire runs, and somebody's detector is chirping, then we'll replace a battery as well. So, it's something that we try to do to help people out, so, thanks.
Thanks, you appreciate what you do. Next up is administrative staff reports.
We have none tonight, sir.
Mayor comments, do have a couple. Five Post Falls police employees took and reaffirmed their oath of office during a pinnin' ceremony held at the department October 11, 2017. Councilor Thorson and I were there. I'd like to congratulate the following, Assistant Chief Pat Knight, promotion from patrol captain, Captain Jason Miller, promotion from patrol sergeant, Sergeant Brian Harrison, promotion from patrol officer, Officer Lucas Krieger, new hire from Rathron Police Department in Idaho, and crime victim advocate Kami Wareley, new hire from North Idaho Casa in Coeur d'Alene. So, congratulations to all, and I'm convinced that our police department is in good hands, so, thank you very much. And, you know, just one, it's that time of year, it seems like, you get into fall, and you get into fundraisers, you get into all sorts of interesting things, and we had the St. Vincent de Paul Fashion Show, Shelley participated, I participated. The next day, Councilor Thorson was emceeing an event where we got to stomp grapes, myself, Mayor Windmeyer, and Mayor Roeburg. And just so you know, it was rigged, I won.
You won?
But because I was stomping.
He did have the best style.
Instead of stomping, and I was stomping instead of acting goofy, so I will say that publicly, that Mayor Roeburg continued to act goofy, and so he won. But it was for Matt's Place, which is an organization to help ALS victims, so, great cause. So, it's on my buckets, I got to stomp grapes, and over the weekend, I got to pick grapes. So, I guess now, the next thing would be to drink the grapes, so I'm looking forward to that part. Anyway, busy time, so we thank all those charitable organizations for the work you do, helping take care of those who are less fortunate in our area. Council comments?
I'm good. I got nothing, I didn't stomp grapes.
It was fun.